Good evening. Welcome to the October 12th meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional Schools Committee. My name is Kate Potter and I call this meeting to order at 6:33. I see that we don't have anyone here for community comments, but I would like to let folks know that in the future, we now have a table for people wanting to make community comments to come and check in with their name and address and then a place for them to sit during community comment. And we are working with Superintendent Smith and technology folks and hoping to be able to bring our meetings livestreamed to those at home. It's a work in progress at this point.
So I believe it is livestreamed, but I think it's the comment--
To be able to zoom in for comments.
For public comments.
Oh, yes, to zoom in, thank you. All right, so seeing as we have no public comments, Superintendent Smith, Superintendent, update please.
Good. Thank you, Chair. So this was what I would call last week, a wonderful week. I had the opportunity and my goal is to get into as many classrooms as possible around the district. So I was able to start out early on Monday, spent quite a bit of time at the middle school with Dr. Tiano, did a number of classroom visits with Assistant Principal Anna Hurley. I then had the opportunity, I believe on Thursday to, and I have to tell you how much I love it, to run out and head, you know, to my backyard and get over to the high school. And I also thank Principal John Smith, who probably spent a good hour and a half with me. We were in about 10 classrooms. And I have to tell you the excitement today, as I was part of a team from the high school in a cable show interviewing the interim superintendent. And when I sat down, I was telling Principal Smith that I was so excited when one of the senior students, Alex, said to me, "You were in my classroom last week." And we started to have dialogue about the, I think it was called literature--
Thoma's Lit-- Thoma's Literature.
Yeah, just excellent. So that, I just, I say that because there's a lot of things that we talk about in school committee, but when you have a week like that as a superintendent and you're able to get into those classrooms, it's really important. And you can take a look here, some of the classes I attended, Thoma's Literature, AP Composition, English, AP Literature, US History, World History 1, 2, and Themes at the middle school. Again, and I want you to pay special attention to your portrait of a graduate. So I walked into one of your Spanish classes, I think it was 7th grade, and when I walked in, the students, they spoke Spanish the whole time that I was in the classroom. I was struggling a little bit. And they were sharing with me that they had built this bulletin board based on the portrait of a graduate and what they did. Every time they saw one of their classmates, whether it's perseverance, any of the qualities, they would take that person's name and put it under the particular competencies. So again, just really excited to see in these classrooms, I've written down, looking for student engagement. Your students are self-assured, they're collaborative, and I want you to see that in the pictures that I'm presenting here. You know, there's rigor in the teacher's lessons. You know, you're preparing students, and I took this also off of your strategic plan because what you say you're doing, you're doing in your teacher's preparation. Rapidly changing world, new learning spaces, and you'll be able to see that. And attention to equity and inclusion. So I planned to, I had put down, and today I was talking with my own leadership team, my goal was to get into every classroom by the end of October. And I was warned that, you know, you have a teacher teaching five sections or four sections of English, and I think they all looked at me and said, "Yeah, you're right." I better not quite phrase it that way. But I am going to try to, at least during the week. And this is modeled throughout my whole leadership team. You know, we try to get into the schools and to support the work that is going on. Next slide, please. This is the middle school. You see students up at the board, you see them engaged in solving math problems together, and that's your collaborative environment. And when you think about the real world, you know, you're not sitting at a desk by yourself. Hopefully, again, when you talk about creating global citizens, one of the things they're able to do is to collaborate to solve problems. Again, you look at the youngsters with their devices, engaged. I will tell you, there are times I walk in classrooms and you've got that student that seems to be involved in something else. And I'm very impressed with the teacher interaction with students, the dialogue that goes on, listening to different thoughts in the classroom, and really encouraging that learning. So you see Principal Smith and myself. I wouldn't be able to tell you all the teachers' names, although I just will have to say again, everybody was welcoming as superintendent when you walk into a classroom. And I know the principal and I talked about a superintendent coming in, but again, they were welcoming. They wanted to share with you what was happening and never missed a beat in the classes. I want you to take a look at the different learning structures. You can see, next slide, please. You can see students collaborating, working together. And next slide. So next I'm going to switch gears and talk about district health and safety priorities. So I bring this up because I want to remind everybody that as I talk about the next couple of items, this is what we, again, are as a district, our priorities. We're ensuring that all students pre-K to 12 have access to high-quality, in-person learning and instruction throughout the school year. And we know right now with public education, I'm sure you're hearing it as well as I'm hearing it, you know, there are some districts that have to close a classroom down. There are colleges, you know, that have had to close down. So that is not our goal. Our goal is, and we've been doing an excellent, excellent job, and that brings everything into account as far as our mitigation strategies, our testing protocols, our encouraging vaccinations for our students and our staff, and I'll talk about that in a second. So next is multiple mitigation strategies, including vaccinations, maskings, help to keep our staff and students safe and provide meaningful opportunities for learning. Our district is committed to reviewing, and I say this also because I think today on the news, I believe just before I left the office, one of the local newspapers called asking what our decision is about the October 15th date coming up, which the commissioner made clear a couple of weeks ago when they extended the mask mandate to November 1st, again, also supported by our Boards of Health. And at the time, the commissioner kept his word and said, "We're going to follow the data and the sciences, give it back to the local communities." And I told you at the time, you know, once we got school up and going, we would look at a focus on this October 15th date, which is Friday. And I will tell you, we have a call coming up this week with the commissioner, I'm sure to really define what this means. So if a district has 80% staff and students with a high 80% vaccination rate, if we send, and I'll go through on the next slide, some of the mandates of what we have to do, the superintendent is able to send to the commissioner a form attesting to the fact that at Dover High School, Dover Sherburne High School, we have a vaccination rate of 80, whatever it is above that. Same thing with Dover Sherburne Middle School. Obviously, we know that at elementary schools, you know, throughout the Commonwealth, nobody is reaching that 80% mark. So again, the last bullet is, the district is committed to reviewing state and local data to make adjustments in order to keep students in school and return to pre-COVID conditions when possible. So in everything that we discuss, we're always looking forward and ahead and hoping that things will start to change, you know, for our students. So the next is the Dover Sherburne Staff Vaccine Mandate Protocol, which again, we brought up at our joint meeting just a couple of weeks ago. So I don't want to go over this again, but there's been a couple of tweaks to this, so I want to bring it to the attention of the school committee. So it was approved, the mandate, by the Boards of Health for Dover and Sherburne on September 22nd. The vaccine verification status was sent to all staff, and they had to complete a form by October 8th, which was last Friday. As you can imagine, when you talk about all staff, you're talking about our custodians, our food service workers, our educational assistants, it isn't just our teachers and staff and administrators. So a larger group make up, you know, the Dover Sherburne School Community. So with that said, we want to make sure that again, when you send out kind of an email blast, you're hoping that you're reaching everybody. So our numbers are coming in as far as many people are responding. I think we're short about 55 people out of about 403. So you can see, most of our staff have responded. So we're able to see that, yes, in fact, they're vaccinated. Their other choice was to request an exemption, which they do have, I believe, until Friday of this week. And those exemptions, again, are the religious exemption and a medical exemption. We put strong documentation in place, you know, again, legally defensible as far as what we're requesting. If somebody has a medical exemption, we're requesting it as a treating doctor that they have, and that they submit the proper information. As far as the religious exemption, that becomes, and I know we've had discussion about it, so obviously, we're going to see where the exemptions come in, if in fact they do. We will work with our administrative and our legal teams to make sure that we honor the rights of our staff members and at the same time, make sure we protect, you know, our schools and our students that are counting on us to do that. So, and I want to also mention too, that we will have for people that are approved with exemptions, what we call testing requirements and procedures for unvaccinated staff. I don't expect that to be a large number, but we'll get back to you again with the numbers we're dealing with. And the guests of the district, as we said, are not subject to any kind of a vaccine mandate. They have to follow our mitigation strategies outlined in our policies and procedures, and we certainly welcome them into our schools and our events happening in the schools. And of course, that's been happening. You know, every day there are people out there enjoying, of course, we're outside in this beautiful weather, but they're enjoying, you know, your sport, your extracurricular activities. You've had, you'll hear tonight, a little bit about open houses or plans for parent-teacher conferences. So these to me are all the pluses as we move forward and try to get ourselves back to pre-COVID conditions. So this is the important information. So the DESI policy on vaccination rate threshold for unmasking in schools. Now, the reason I'm saying this is, again, the mask mandate is through November 1st. On October 15th, as I stated, you will have an opportunity as a district to designate a vaccination rate of at least 80% or more for all students and staff in a school. And when, we weren't sure, again, if when you look at the middle school and the high school, where we share a wing of the middle school, we share linguist commons for your cafeteria for students. So what we have found out is, our nurse supervisor Jill Fedor was on a conference call with many of these questions answered. Our high school, even though it has a wing here in the middle school, is considered its own school. So whatever that vaccination rate is, they have their own bathrooms that they use here. There is probably passing in a corridor if at some time they were unmasked and there was something different for the middle school, but we're assured that we would meet these requirements, again, looking at these as two separate schools. What we are going to do, we have to submit, as I said, the superintendent has to sign an attestation form to even get approval. So if we go out there and we're starting to also discuss, how do we gather information now on our students? And I don't want to confuse people, there's no vaccine mandate for our students, I'm talking about unmasking. So very different than the conversation I just had about our staff. So for our students, what we would, you know, want to do is we could have either the parents on behalf of a student, they can sign a self-attestation form, you know, completed by the vaccinated individual or their parent or guardian. There's also documentation from the Mass Department of Public Health, your healthcare provider with a vaccination record card, or a printout from M-I-I-S, the Massachusetts Immunization Information System. We are holding our breath on our healthcare system that we use here for our student, our data input, called SNAP, to be able to basically speak to, I think it speaks to Aspen, is that the two, or actually--
The state database.
The state database, I'm sorry, and SNAP, to give us information on our students. That will be a whole lot better if we're able to populate our student database to see where our percentage is. That is supposed to be, it had something, we keep calling it a bug, a correction, we've been saying this since August. So I'm trying to be hopeful that this will happen. Other than that, there's going to be some labor obviously involved, and we'll be reaching out, you know, to parents and our nurses at our schools will be working on this. And then I put down here, it's very important that we continue to consult with our Boards of Health for Dover and Sherburne. We also have our Health and Hygiene Committee. One of the things I will tell you in talking to them today, and I want to make sure, let's see, I have too many papers here, but I want to be sure to share with you that in our, we have a weekly meeting on Tuesdays. And one of the things we talked about, and this is Dr. Matt Beavers, Dr. Kay Peterson, Dr. Matt Vitale, and I am so pleased to have them join us for conversations about, you know, things that we're dealing with here. And I say that because the goal is the same for all of us, to get our kids back to pre-COVID conditions, but also to keep our kids in school. So one of the things that they were saying is, there is no one way of collecting data. You know, for instance, one of the things that we actually talked about was in looking at percentage rates. Maybe in Dover Sherburne, we might meet that 80% rate, but we might look at 90, we might look at a 95% rate, and not just alone. At the same time, you're also looking at lower positive cases in the community of Dover and Sherburne, a sustained lower or downtrending rates in the community. So they wanted us to be very careful, there's no one measure to look at, and things change, you know, certainly every week, we get some kind of an update for the trends and what's happening in the two towns. So we'll continue to do that. Also, there was talk about the pool testing. So this has worked very well at our elementary schools. We have close to, I think, a 70% participation rate that we're very pleased with at both Chicaring and Pine Hill. So with that, we are absolutely in a routine, we've been very fortunate that we have had negative pools. So again, if it was something that we had to pay attention to, you know how that works, it alerts us that there, you know, could be a positive case, we're able to look at it individually so that it's not something that's festering. So this has helped us. We have not had it at this point at the middle and high school. So again, it might be something, they cautioned us again about just doing pool testing for vaccinated individuals. So our elementary is a little bit different than what we're dealing with, obviously, at our middle and high school as those rates continue to rise. So I just want you to know that all of that is in discussion. So even when you hear me talking about the ability to send something to the commissioner, to say Dover is meeting the requirements, we attest to that fact, it doesn't mean that the masks come off, it means we continue to work and make a decision on what is best for our community. So would you like me to stop there, or, I've just got a couple of other slides and then I'll answer questions?
I can wait till the end.
Thank you. So the next slide is about the school committee retreat. So I have to say, I had the privilege of attending the two retreats. So we had a retreat on the 27th of September with our regional school committee, you had 100% attendance. I thought Dorothy Presser from MASC did a great job, but more importantly, again, I thought the committee was very reflective, you know, working together to take a look at how we can have better board meetings. You know, the material you need ahead of time, what happens during the meeting, what happens after the meeting, you know, meeting with the chair, meeting with the chairs when we have joint school committee meetings. So we talked about the roles and responsibilities of school committee members and the superintendent. You did an excellent job starting to look at operating protocols, and you do have norms, and you're looking at the norms to see if there are additions that need to be made. And that will be our follow-up meeting because just last Thursday night, the locals, both Dover and Sherburne, went through the same exercise that you did, and again, they did an excellent job. I think the thing that is overwhelming is, we had a number of new members on the locals. I know you're more a veteran staff here, Tracy, of course, I know, I see you shaking your head, but they were, you know, couldn't get enough information. So we are looking to have, and I don't want to confuse anybody, but this week we're having a training, and that's professional development on public records request and open meeting law, and that is for both our locals and our regional school committee members. We also are going to have the MASC come into our district, I believe it's going to be after the first weekend November because they have their conference. So your conference, MASC, Mass Association for School Committees, and Mass Association for School Superintendents. And I feel so bad because that is a conference you really want to attend in person. Other school committee members, superintendents, they usually do an excellent job with many offerings, they have to really limit in-person participation. So I am going one night to actually hear the commissioner speak, which is the first evening, and our team is looking at some of the offerings, I know we also put that out there for school committee members. But the good news is, Dorothy Presser said after that conference, she is coming to the Dover Sherburne District to do charting the course. So it's going to be on our own turf here, not everybody needs every one of the modules. So she is going to prepare opportunities for us as committees, you know, to take advantage. I think we're even going to keep a couple of seats for some of our neighboring towns that have new committee members that have to meet that mandate. Is it within the first year you have to take the charting the course? So I know it seems overwhelming, you've been really working hard, you're also, you know, again, conducting your superintendent search, you have a lot going on. But I just want to talk about the commitment, and I was very impressed with the work that went on. And to finish up with my last slide, we do have two vacancies. So we have a vacancy on the Dover School Committee, and that was Leslie Leon, who did an excellent job in the district, supporting our schools, and I want to thank her for that, but that is an opening. And letters of interest and resume, and again, tomorrow is the 13th, so any of you out there, if there are people you know on the PTAs, PTOs, involved in the schools, you know, we really would appreciate interest. It's certainly just a letter of interest and a resume, you would send it directly to Sarah, the address is there. And this is to fulfill for the rest of this year, your elections, I believe, are in May 2022. So it would just be to fill from October to May. And then Sherburne also has a school committee vacancy, and that is because Angie has come over to the region, was Angie, I knew she came in. So that left a void there, and again, same thing, except theirs is a little later, it's October 29th, and it's to Diane, is it Moore's? And that is in the Sherburne Town Offices, so she is accepting that information. So that is my update this evening, and I'll put it up to questions before I hand it over to the rest of my team.
That was wonderful, thanks for the updates. I do have concerns, being a clinician, I've been contacted by a lot of parents regarding their children's healthcare, their specific conditions, so. And in response to really just supporting all of our employees here, my concerns for the record have been that I have seen where a person was asking for an exemption for a healthcare issue in our town, and did have a letter from their treating physician, and it was turned down by the Board of Health, very concerning to me. So I'm not sure that I totally am behind them approving this. I think I'd rather see it go to like the school nurse or something like that, so that's just--
It is, I'm sorry, if I confused you on that--
Yeah, maybe me too, yeah.
No, no, I'm sorry, the exemptions come into the superintendent. So we have medical exemptions, they come to the superintendent's office--
Excellent.
If we need to seek our legal, and I talked about really the religious exemption, you know, just try to understand a religious exemption, which is a little bit different than the medical exemption--
Very different, yeah.
If they have documentation from their primary care or a treating physician.
Okay.
If we feel we need additional information, we'll reach out and get that, but we're making the decision.
Okay, but that additional reach out is to the Board of Health, right?
It is not.
It's not.
It is, we'd work with our nurse supervisor, we probably would reach out to the treating physician if we had a question, needed more information.
Excellent, that is fabulous, I'm pro that, thank you. Okay, the second thing, one of the things I was a little bit concerned about, considering the parents that have been contacting me, and tell me again if I confused something here, if we get to that over 80% or whatever the Board of Health decides this is, the vaccinated get to not wear a mask, but I didn't see anything that the unvaccinated get to not wear a mask. And here's my concern, is that some of the parents that have contacted me, their children have cardiac issues, et cetera, and some of the side effects we've seen from this mRNA, you know, it's not a regular vaccine, it's a little bit different than that, so they're concerned for their children. Now, if their children can't get this vaccine because they don't feel safe for their specific medical condition, now do those children have to wear masks in school and therefore are kind of seen as different and kind of segregated and seen differently? When, it doesn't mean that their parents are anti-vax at all, I mean, most parents are not anti-vaccine at all, but this is a different product. So what do we do with those children? You know, if we get to that point, are those children allowed to be unmasked too, just like the children who are vaccinated?
I'm going to, again, we have a meeting coming up--
Okay.
And this is not with the Board of Health, this is the commissioner, but we have also had this conversation.
Good, good, good.
So I am going to venture that, again, they're going to say to us that if you're unvaccinated, the request would be an honor system, that you would be masked. I'm sure if we have to, you know, work with our principals, our leadership teams, our nurses in the schools, but we have the same concern.
Of course, of course, right, right.
If our students--
We don't want the children to feel different, yeah.
We don't want to, and there could be people, you know, I don't know, I mean, some of the, you know, I walk into a supermarket, I've had the vaccine, I just got my booster shot yesterday, I've done everything I can, and yet I will walk in there masked, just for whatever reason.
There's a ton of reasons, yeah.
Right, so, but we have also talked about this.
Good, good.
So once again, I wish I had all the answers, I take it a step at a time. Like I said, we have a meeting with the commissioner, a Zoom call when I say a meeting, by the way, and we will hear those questions asked. The one thing I did say about the Health and Hygiene Committee is, they don't see it as one factor. So if we meet that threshold, I could send in to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education saying, you know, "We've met this threshold, I attest to that fact, do we have it back in our court now? We will now determine what the next steps are."
Right, right, okay.
So, yeah, but there is concern.
That makes me feel much better, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, Kathy, thank you for your, for the information that you gave us. In the future, it would be really, really helpful for us if you could please give us ahead of time, as part of a packet, several days in advance, what your presentation's going to be about, because it's not so easy on the spot to formulate questions when the issues are pretty complicated. So if we could have that in the future, that would be really helpful.
Sure, and I'm happy to work with you, Judy, on it, it was actually brought up at our meeting the other day.
It's not just me.
No, no, not at all, not at all. So in terms of, for instance, here, we had all our information that we presented, I could put it, make sure it's in that packet for you for your school committee, the information on the vaccines, information from DESI, I know it was in former packets, but I'll make sure you have it if it's going to be something that I'm going to discuss, that's fair.
That would be really--
Sure, thank you.
Because it's really hard to sort of, you know, and the other, I'm sorry, Maggie, do you want to go ahead?
All right, you go.
The other question I have is, have we gotten any, so there are 55 people who haven't responded, and I'm really pretty bad at math, I'm serious.
Okay.
And that, I think that that means it's about 15%. Is that what we had expected in terms of the numbers of people who aren't vaccinated? And I know it's not, and know that that number isn't necessarily, it's just people who have responded. Can you, can you tell us something about what the expectation was for that number, where you think we're going with it, how many, and if you know, how many people have asked for exemptions? Because the thing I have a concern about is, if our numbers are different from what we expected and we need to end up going out and getting subs, how's that looking this year?
The substitute is going to be another whole concern. So we did have a date of last Friday. And one of the things we are concerned about, you know, I want to say everybody has access to email, but not necessarily on a regular basis. So there are some members in our staff that we're not sure if they got the email. So we had a large percentage respond, so out of what we think is 403 about staff members that are part of what we would consider our staff, we only have, and it changes constantly, I'm working with Kate McCarthy, who's overseeing the site, it continually is changing. For instance, on Friday, we sent out a reminder, and within an hour, we had 100 more as we were getting to that date of October 8th. So let's say there are 55 out right now. I do know that I think three have requested exemptions. Out of the, let's say 348 have responded, three requested exemptions and 55 are still out. And Judy, you're going to have to check my math, so.
Yeah.
Who's the math people here? So I don't know if that answers your question, but it is a work in progress because what we're going to have Kate McCarthy do is, we're going to send individually to the 55 members, and we're working as a team. So Dawn's office, there are some, again, employee groups that she can--
We included Dita and Sheeta, right? So, and it's in the food service, they're not regularly on email--
Yeah, I know.
So that's, that's some of the people, it's not that they haven't been vax, you know, it's just that they haven't gotten to know the information. So we'll pinpoint those categories of employees and help them get on a computer to fill out the form.
Yeah, okay, that makes--
Yeah, yeah. And remember, this is-- Yeah. And remember, this is the number across all three districts.
Yeah, that answers. That makes the, that makes the number more understandable.
And we're also going to have personal outreach beyond that. If when we do this initial outreach, we think that 55, that will reduce that number from people filling out the form. I don't know if they're vaccinated or requesting exemptions. Initially, our information was about 12 to 13 that we thought initially were unvaccinated. I know for a fact that there are some people that, you know, just, just were taking their time and this might have been the opportunity now to, to begin the vaccination process. So I will have more information for you, but you asked a very good question, Judy. And we've talked about it before, you know, where do we go from here? So I would like to defer to see exactly where we land. If we land with three exemptions, you know, everybody else vaccinated, then that's what I'm dealing with.
Yeah, and that's a lot easier to deal with than a lot more. The issue of subs won't be an issue.
And subs is an issue. Just, it just is an issue with.
But we know though that the population, that most of the educators are not in that 55. So your classroom management, I don't think is going to be.
Okay, so that's helpful. That's really helpful. Thank you very much.
I think, I just wanted to speak a little bit to Tracy's point about for kids who can't get vaccinated or for adults who might need the exemption. And, you know, or adults, as we, I'm thinking ahead as we begin the process of making masks optional or, you know, making it more the norm that people aren't wearing them. And I guess, like the thing I would love to see in our community, to your point, is that everyone in our community gives each other grace. So whether or not you are vaccinated or you, you know, like I, 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 I have a sniffle today. I know it's just allergies. I've, you know, done all the things, but I don't want to, you know, chance that would make you sick. That we would have a culture in our community where, you know, I would love to see, you know, if a teacher has an elderly parent that they take care of and they say, you know what? I know we're not wearing masks, but I do because I'm really worried about my baby at home. Would you class wear a mask in my classroom? That kids would say, yes, I want to take care of you. I'm part of your class. Or, you know, my sibling is fighting cancer right now. Could we? Like, I would just like to see this, we move forward where we can take off the masks, that it be part of a community of care, that people say, yes, if that's what you need, I'll take care of you. And then maybe in other classes, we don't have to, because I think, like, that's what this is all about. And not like if a child has a health problem, needing to feel like they're ostracized, but that they're cared for. So I, I just, like, as we move forward, I'm excited that we can get to that point, hopefully sooner than later. You know, for facial recognition and all the things that we're trying to kind of do this year. But I guess I hope that as we move forward, it becomes like us and not them and us.
That certainly isn't our intent, but I, I can't tell you. It's not a discussion. Those are great points. Again, I, I know having been in your schools, that you do have communities of care. That's exactly what you have. So I will work with our leadership team and we will come up with some plans if in fact we reach a point where we are allowed to unmask and make sure kids understand it's, it's, first of all, it's a work in progress. We can't say if we unmask, we saw what happened, you know, I thought we were out of the woods in June. I think we talk about that all the time. And lo and behold, you know, here, here we are back again and, and doing a good job.
That's awesome. I just want us to teach each other. I'm excited that we can do that. And then don't want it to turn into like what you said, you know, like kids being mean to other kids if they are.
Yeah, it's going to be embarrassing for those kids that have these medical conditions as it is. It's going to be tough on them.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I'd like to hand it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Beth McCoy.
Great, thank you. So I have one slide. I'll keep it short and sweet. I had the opportunity to meet with all 13 of our curriculum leaders and department chairs over the last couple of weeks. As I mentioned in our last meeting, we're working on equity and our systems of support as a district. But clearly there is work to be done within each department and discipline. So I've had a chance to meet with those leaders. They're developing their goals right now and working with their principals to launch the work. For example, in the middle school English department, they're working on book clubs, which they have learned a lot about from Lucy Hawkins and the Reader's Workshop model at Teachers College, which aligns with the K through five program. Our math classes are looking at the flipped classroom and what kind of pieces do we want to take away from the pandemic? And keep with us, science continued to look at inquiry. History is looking at the high school civics project as we kind of potentially turn the corner away from NCAS exams in the state. The dreaded history NCAS test is not going to be thrust upon us. Instead, we have a project, which is great news. So again, as Kathy said, one of her highlights is being in classrooms. I would absolutely agree. And I would say second to that is getting to meet with our instructional leaders. Our data dashboard. So in support of looking at students' academic progress, their social emotional learning, their behavioral data, their attendance, especially coming out of a pandemic where we know that students might need some extra support and interventions, we were lucky in that the timing was right for us to have got involved with this pilot program. Panorama is an online dashboard that takes in data from all of our various systems and puts it in one place. So our leaders and our teachers are incredible about keeping Google spreadsheets and color coding, everything. They're amazing, but it's a lot to keep track of. And especially as students move from the fifth grade to the sixth grade, or the eighth grade to the ninth grade, getting that information to go along with the students is not necessarily seamless. So this is going to allow us to put all of our data in one place. We can write notes about intervention plans, communication with parents. It'll follow the kids all the way through. When we have our data team cycles, usually right around when the report cards come out, groups, our student support teams will be able to sit around. And obviously there are students who rise to the level of concern just because of the observations we see in the classroom or their test scores. But this is going to allow us to look universally at the entire school or the entire grade or the entire class to make sure that there aren't kiddos that we're missing and be able to zone in on what they need, either in the academic realm or the social emotional realm. So Kathy and I talked about potentially having a presentation just on Panorama for you at an upcoming joint meeting.
And let me just add to that. So we see this as a pilot. So it came in after the budget season, right? But we have all the ESAR funds. So Panorama is being covered by our ESAR II grants in all three districts. And I think we'll have another year to continue to pilot before we look to try to build it into the fiscal year, probably '24 budget. So that was, but it's a, it's definitely capturing school data, right? And it's got SEL components. So it was perfect for what the grants are meant to cover.
I've also been taking my show on the road. As of today, I have made it to all four faculty meetings to provide an update on the proposed supervision and evaluation changes, which I shared with you at our last meeting, as well as I'm bringing NYU via Zoom to these meetings to introduce them to the faculty and get a big overview of what the audit looks like in general terms, and they can ask questions. And that's similar to the presentation you'll have next week with NYU at your October 19th joint meeting. And as has already come up, we are seeking substitute teachers at all four buildings. So if you know any good candidates, please have them reach out to central office, to the building leaders. We would love to get them in the system for several reasons. And I'm happy to take questions.
You mentioned the equity audit. If you're not prepared to talk about this, Beth, it's fine. I just, is there some real short update on where we're at with it?
Sure. So the applications for the advisory board, which is supposed to be a multi-stakeholder group of 10 to 15 people, those were due on the 4th. NYU, I believe, is trying to come up with a perfect puzzle of diversity, students, teachers, community members. And they're in the process of contacting those who have been selected to make sure that they want to participate. And I believe their first meeting is tomorrow night. Kathy and I will not be a part of that. And then they are going to start talking about the context of Dover Sherburne, what it is that we want to narrow in on, what kinds of questions we want to ask, and those sorts of things. So at this point, the leadership team has had their overview of the audit. The schools are now having their overview of the audit. You will next week. And then at that point, we'll be ready to launch it to the larger community about timelines for surveys, focus groups, and those sorts of things.
So I'm just a week early.
Yes. Come back on Tuesday.
We've got a preview.
Yeah, that's perfect. I didn't mean to jump the gun, but thank you.
But I will say they were very impressed with, I believe, one email went out or notification looking for people to be part of the advisory board. I think you had 41, you know, parents interested in, in the community. They, they said that was, you know, excellent and have done this for a while. So they'll be able to share with you.
When will we find out who they are, who was chosen for it?
So they are, they have taken this on in their own and they're contacting the 10 to 15 people they selected. And I think just going through the list, and if someone declines because of the dates or something else came up, you know, they're going through the list. So I would think because the first meeting is tomorrow night, that those people have probably been contacted and the others have probably said, you know, we appreciate your interest and there are other opportunities to get involved, whether it's through the focus groups or joining DSA. So I would bet that people have heard by now.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you. Any other thoughts or questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to High School Principal, John Smith.
Thank you, Superintendent Smith. As you can see, on Thursday, September 30th, we were fortunate to return to an in-person option for open house, which was fantastic. We ran the open house as we have in the past where it's 10-minute blocks, five minutes between passing. Gives parents and guardians a great opportunity to kind of see and walk through their student, their child's schedule, a chance to meet the teacher, learn about the overview, the expectations, modes of communication. Now, because we're also still in this pandemic and we're dealing with COVID-related issues, we also offered a second option for parents and guardians, and that was a screencastify or a video. It was sent out. We gave the teacher some leeway in what system or what app they wanted to use for it. And those were sent out two days in advance. Same type of thing. Overview, communication, here's what I do. Some teachers, you know, went a little further. Here's who I am. Here's my family, et cetera, et cetera. And it was, it was, you know, well received on both ends. I actually had a couple of parents reach out to me to thank us for doing that because they were then able to go back. In case there was something that they missed, they could go back and watch it again, which was great. And for some parents who did want to come in person for them, they said it was fantastic. They got to finally, you know, get back into the school. There were some sophomore parents. It was their first time in the building, which really had a real benefit as well. We had a smaller group of students helping out still, you know, because our students know the building so much better than the adults. Helping people out. We had extra copies of schedules. We did not have our traditional large support groups, just because we wanted to lower the density. And we did respectfully ask that only one parent or guardian come, unless you had multiple children. And then it's always, you know, trying to figure out who's going to go see what. So really a, a real positive evening. Band and chorus presented after that, because as you know, they worked during the flex block. So parents and guardians also got to go to that too. So that really was great and it worked out well. And it was, it was really kind of a nice somewhat return to normalcy. You know, and for some of the families, they said it was just great to sort of be out and about. We're having a really good opening. I feel as though we're really, you know, for the most part, back to normal, pretty much. We've got all of our classes. We do have a different schedule. We're still tweaking some of our flex block groupings. And there's some things that for some of our students, you know, that I think fit a little better than others. We know that students loved having that extra long lunch last year. And as much as we liked it, we just can't do it and still offer all of our elective time. Because last year, our courses only met for 160 minutes. This year, they're meeting for 250 minutes. So, you know, as a focus of return to rigor, return to social emotional development, we still have our break. We still have our lunch. We have flex block. We have DR. Seniors can still sign out for, for senior privilege. We still have the option of all students, freshmen through seniors, who are able to sleep in. If they have a directed research first period, they can still do that. And then of course, if a parent or guardian dismisses them at the end of the day, they're able to do that as well. So that's really gone pretty well. Athletics have gone well. The fall play is going really well. We've got a lot of clubs up and running this year. So it's definitely a much smoother and, and I think a more positive opportunity. Kids last, last year were just thrilled to be back in school. But now this year, we're obviously taking it a step further to ensure that they're getting all of those experiences that they so virtually deserve. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions or things from my report that you might have had questions about.
Yeah, please. I first want to echo and thank you and all of the faculty for the experience of the one Sharon. That's a student at the high school. I think all the things that you said ring really true in terms of the experience that I know Matt and all of his classmates have had this year. So just a huge thanks. I, I attended the virtual option for open house. And also wanted to say thank you to, you know, the seven teachers that sent the screencasts. Like they were really thoughtful. They were really well done. I really, I just very much appreciated all the, I know a lot of work goes into that.
Yeah, they are time consuming. Yeah.
And you're also coming to open house. So thank you for all of that. It was really helpful. I noticed a big, what seemed to me to be a big uptick in the computer science offerings this year. Just maybe it's just that some of them were new to me, but it seems like there's a lot of really good things going on with computer science.
Yeah, so over the last two to three years, we've been adding some additional courses. As you know, last year, we brought in the AP Computer Science. We have tweaked some new courses. It obviously goes through the program of, of studies and through your approval process. But we, we really have grown that department. I want to thank Nick Grouse for his vision around this and Beth McCoy in looking at the portrait of a graduate and looking at the skills that are necessary. So we definitely have enhanced and beefed that section up. This year, we have a financial literacy course, which is incredibly popular. And really important, we're, we're a little ahead of the curve with some schools because they are discussing this as a potential graduation requirement at the state. So, you know, we're really, we're happy about that. I can give you sort of a little preview of what might be coming. And that's, we're in the process of proposing a forensics course for next year in the science department as a result of, you know, some interests of students and things that are going on. So we're always trying to look at adding some new courses while still maintaining the integrity of our core and making sure that we can fit all of this. Because every time we add something new, it still has to fit in that same puzzle. It's not like we can extend the puzzle or extend the day.
Well, I, I really, I noticed just looking at the whole overall of the computer science, it, it looks great on. And I also appreciate a lot of the new courses seem to be multidisciplinary so they can count. You know, I think the financial literacy could count for math or could count for something else. Or however you're working it out to make it more flexible for kids. So thank you.
Yeah, and John, if I'm ahead of what you want to tell us about, like I was with Beth, let me know.
Sure.
But I'm wondering how the flex block is working out? And, and seriously, like, what's, what's, what's good, what's bad? And have you thought about tweaking it? Is it not time to do that yet? Do you have not enough data to know? I know that's a new and exciting thing, and I just wanted to know how it's going.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, like all new programs, it certainly has its growing pains, but there are many positives that have come about as a result of that. You know, one of the most important to me, the band and chorus, being able to have their operational courses during that time so that kids can still be having music and, as if you remember that Dennis Barry and Jeff Herman's slogan. So that's absolutely a positive. Now, that doesn't impact everybody, right? Another positive has been we've been able to group three teachers together. I have a group. Ms. Keegan has a group as well. And we rotate in through there and have really gotten to know these kids. And we will stay with these kids for their remaining time in high school, except for senior year. We've done a few focused advisory type activities. We've got another one coming up this week. Another bonus has been, you know, this year, our kids are going to get a lot of surveys. So we've looked at how do we maximize that opportunity while also maintaining the integrity of our academic disciplines? So when possible, we're going to use flex or parts of flex for the survey. Metro West, our, our, through DSAID, our equity audit, thank you. And then also we'll have a follow-up, probably another challenge success one. So it has been beneficial in that way. Now, what has been a challenge? I think students still trying to. I think students still trying to figure out, I'm assigned to this room, I want to go get some math help. And what we have told them is, you just go right to that class because it's only thirty minutes. I think some students are still trying to figure that out. Or I go to that math class and I get a couple of questions answered, but I'm all set now. Where can I now go? For now, we've said for responsibility and for liability, we need you to stay in that room. So Ann has been researching an app that Westwood High School is actually using, because this is their first year of using a flex block. Theirs is at a different time. And it allows for students to plug in electronically where they're going to go. Similar to how we now use the QR code, that was a silver lining of the pandemic, where our students can sign in and sign out using the QR code. They'd be able to do the same there. So we'd have greater connections with where kids are going and what's available. And I think you can even build in a teacher availability chart within that. So if they're looking for that teacher, which is great. So I think that that's something that we are looking to tweak. The time does work out well, too, because we are, even though we have the later start, we're really only one of two schools that still has this later start. So we have to be flexible with it. So I did not want to have kids being dismissed from classes left and right. So that's why we also put at the end of the day, so that the golf team, for example, all fall is being dismissed during that, almost every day, just because golf is such a limited timeframe and you're at the mercy of the golf course. And it has also enabled us to then get our athletic teams to their contests without missing academic time. So, which is really, you know, sort of another benefit. So I think it's still a little early, but we already know there's some things we want to tweak around accountability. We're still trying to work out some of how teachers are providing extra help. Our library is not one of our flex block areas, so teachers can actually use the library as a spot for working with kids. So it's a great place for that. Personally and selfishly, I've loved it because I've got a group of sophomores that I really have gotten to really know well, which is great. And I, and, and I think that if you're a teacher and you make that effort, you really can develop some great relationships with your kids. Maybe not to the same level if you have them in class every day, but you can still know who they are. And those kids can still understand sort of how we fit in this whole community piece. So, long way of saying, we got a few things we definitely need to tweak, but we have seen a lot of positive movement out of what's happening.
Excellent, thank you.
I have a couple of questions, John. That was, that sounds wonderful. Thanks for asking that, Judy. You said that there was a lot of surveys for the children. Do the parents find out what surveys you're sending to the, I'm sorry, I don't have a child in the house.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Do the parents have, are they kind of notified that these?
Yes, they are. And there are always our opt-out options, too. So, for example, the Metro West Youth Risk Survey, which I think middle schools sometimes will do that, too. But we, we send that information out in advance and there is absolutely an opt-out. And by sending it out, we also give parents and guardians a heads-up as to what types of questions are going to be asked. And I'm guessing there'll be the same with the equity. And I know that for challenge success, there is, too. The challenge success in the Metro West, we've actually used for the later school start. We've used it for sleep patterns of our kids. We've used it for academic success. So it has a lot of benefits, but we also appreciate and respect that sometimes parents just aren't comfortable depending on what level their kid is at in doing that. So that is always an option, Tracy.
Yeah. No, I was, I think the mental health questionnaires are excellent. So that's why I would kind of like to know when they're coming and say, oh, hey, make sure you take this.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And the way that we're going to do the Metro West this year at the high school is, we're going to take the first thirty minutes of our last block. Our blocks do rotate, so it wouldn't be the same. And then the rest of flex. So what's great about that is, for some kids, they take about thirty-five minutes. Other kids take as long as fifty, fifty-five minutes. This way, kids who want to spend that fifty, fifty-five minutes on that survey can, without feeling rushed.
Right.
And the other kids can then move on to academic work if they're done early. So they're not just sitting there.
Yeah, thank you. No, I grew up here and one of my concerns has always been our suicide rate, to be honest.
Correct.
So I did a little bit of work with Dr. Kio before on this. So I do like to hear that those surveys are coming out. So thank you.
Absolutely.
That's great.
I just had a quick, well, one comment, one question. I went to the in-person back-to-school night and I thought it was great. I think, I think some of the parents were excited to see each other, just as much as like, I kind of felt like I was in high school because I haven't seen anyone for so long. So that was really fun. It was great to meet the teachers face-to-face. And I know that I also have the videos saved. So that was great. Thank you for offering both. And I also just wanted to comment on Emily Sullivan, our athletic director. I was happy to see that she's, it sounds like getting started on, working on some assistant coach money to be budgeted in. And I know that's something that we've talked about a lot. And, so that we're not, you know, it's expensive to begin with to, to be on a team and then we're not fundraising the families to death. So I was really happy to see.
Yeah, and just so that you know the process, so we've talked about in the past that athletic advisory as well, and people have been on board with it. And next, it'll go to the ACED, which is extra compensatory group, which each year meets in October. It's typically chaired by the superintendent and will review any changes, deletions, increased ratios. So that's the first place it needs to go. If it then passes through there, it can then be recommended to the superintendent and then ultimately given consideration by the superintendent's office. And then it comes to you for your consideration for going into the budget or not.
Yeah, right. So that would be your December meeting. So Emily and I met, and I think a new expense that I wasn't aware of, and I believe you, at some of the teams, is the huddle. That that was also a large component of why teams were fundraising, certain of the teams. So we had capacity in the operating budget for this year, with girls hockey not being as big anymore, to bring in the half of the huddle that the teams used to have to pay for. So that's already been taken off the team's plate. The other piece is a little more complicated because it has to go through the approval process. Part of, though, of bringing all these expenses in is most likely, for the budget reasons, will probably bring forward a small increase in the athletic fee to cover the extra coaches and then the huddle. And so it should be so that there's really no fundraising at the team level. You know, John and I were just talking, like, cross-country does the race, so they raise a little money, but that's almost a community service project, too. It's not parents having to provide the money. So I think that's more team-building, those kind of activities that, you know.
That's what we want the focus to be, more around community service. And that doesn't mean that you can't make a little bit of money in a community service activity. What we don't want to have that is, unfortunately, does happen now, is, in some cases, captains' parents will simply ask the families to pay an additional fee on top of that. Now, in their defense, that has been something that has happened for a long time. And when you become this captain's parent, you inherit a lot. It's like a wheelbarrow dumped on you. So, you know, to advocate for those parents, they simply are just doing what has kind of been done in some of these sports. Some of these sports require more. We're also a community that has very high expectations for our academics, for our arts, and our athletics. And with that comes a cost where we're fortunate that we have some additional assistance. And if we do want to maintain that level of competitiveness across the board, we have excellent student-to-teacher ratios in our classroom. We have several stipend positions in the arts. We could probably always look at having a few more, but we have a number of them, not just one. The same needs to be the case in athletics, and that's why we would be asking it. For those of you who don't know, Huddle is a software package that enables coaches to break down film. But even more importantly nowadays, kids can also use it for their own recruiting purposes, and it creates snippets of their own highlights. So you can go as in-depth as you want if your son or daughter's playing a sport. Everything can be incorporated into the Huddle program, and it breaks it down. And it really is a program that is being used by most schools' athletic departments.
And Boosters has been very supportive and actually has purchased the equipment that we need to do this. And it's just the annual subscription that where, you know, that the teams used to have to pay half of, so.
And just to clarify, I probably didn't say it well. I'm all for the car washes and those kind of things. I know my son's on the golf team. They apparently had a wildly successful car wash a few weeks ago. I'm all for that. The hard part is, is like you said, when maybe you take play, you take part in that, and then towards the end of the season, someone says, oh, well, we need everybody to pitch in another hundred dollars. And so, I like that we're looking into this.
The only other nominal cost that we could really think of that most schools incur would be a small end-of-season thing. But that really should be fifteen, twenty dollars at most, really, right? It's just a little bit of food, a little bit of celebration. You know, to be quite honest, as much as the coaches appreciate the generosity of the parents and guardians, they don't need to be given all these jackets and things. I mean, you know, you get one item, that's great, you know, right? A lot of times, it's just really the gratitude and the thank you. So I don't want parents and guardians to think, oh, if this program doesn't give the coach a jacket or something like that, that they're not doing their part. That's not the case. You know, maybe historically, that has kind of happened, but I think it's time that we kind of put a halt to that and just say, what's most important? What's most important is our kids have a great experience, that they learn a lot, have some success, and that they get to, you know, be together at the end of the season and a banquet. It doesn't have to be over the top. It can be, just like you said, having fun.
Yeah.
Having fun.
Yeah, and I think just making sure that a family doesn't decide not to attend the banquet because they don't want to spend a hundred dollars on it.
Correct.
So, yeah.
And bringing it to...
Expectation be set, though.
Well, there already are guidelines around banquet to begin with. I think sometimes people just don't follow it.
Yeah.
Right? So that's part of the problem. But we, in the Athletic Handbook, there are guidelines for what that should be. And that was set a number of years ago, and I think it's not supposed to be over twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, it's supposed to be, like, you know, no later than nine o'clock, less than two hours. Yeah.
Right.
It's like, it was pretty...
That's why I asked.
And Emily has pushed back a little bit on that, and we've gotten some pushback. So I just think if we can get some of this put into the budget to take some of the pressure off, you know, also, if you're a captain's parent, it's, it's a lot, too, you know, some of you know. So we're trying to take that pressure off so that it can be more about you enjoying your child playing that sport for the season than worrying about being this party planner.
Yeah. Well, and it pits, the role, it pits the coaches, you know, the captain's parent against the other parents.
It does, it does.
Really, it's, it's an awful position to be in.
Yep.
You know, congratulations, you know. But yeah, and it's very difficult to manage the expectations around things like the banquet. And, you know, people, you know, we like to, we like to party.
The model that has really worked well are some of our bigger teams, our cross-country and our track teams. You know, they would have it in Lincoln Commons, and the kids would say they had just as good of a time because bottom line is, they were with each other, they were sharing funny moments, you know. You can put on a nice performance afterwards, but that cost really should be nominal. It just shouldn't be a lot because people are already contributing an awful lot of time and money as it is.
Right.
And just another benefit of bringing it into appendixy, it sort of equalizes it with our other stipend positions versus the team deciding what to give the individuals.
Yeah, right.
And we're going to be doing the same. You'll probably see some of the fine and performing arts positions that are outside appendixy right now.
Bring them in.
I talked to Jeff Herman about bringing those in. Again, just to make sure we're paying everyone equitably for those that are in appendixy. So those will not necessarily be part of the operating budget. It'll be paid for from the proceeds of this show, like some of the middle school activities and the high school activities. However, it will make sure that we're paying everyone equitably and also sort of approves what positions a production can have. And it leaves, it makes it a little more structured versus up to, you know, each show. So we're looking to sort of streamline some of that.
That's, that's great.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other questions or thoughts?
I had a question, just, you know, looking for a little more information about the, so I noticed in the report, the STEM club, one of its goals is to close the gender gap. And I wonder, you know, is that, you know, what are they doing to do that? What, you know, have they found success in it? What are the challenges?
Yeah, and I think it's more a global perspective of closing the gender gap. So, you know, they're looking at, similar to a lot of other clubs and a lot of other high schools that pertain to that, is having more women enter STEM fields. And how are they doing it? I think by professing and being part of these groups, number one, and sort of getting out there so that the school knows. We recently have done a combination team, science Olympiad team with med field. So it's also doing some activities with them as well in conjunction. So, you know, for our students, I think in some cases, it's just, you know, getting involved and showing that, that women can be incredibly successful in STEM and that there are many STEM careers that they should be considering that perhaps in twenty, thirty years ago, they just didn't, you know, and/or couldn't. So I think it's some local advertising and promotion. It's the groups themselves. One of the neat things that we've seen over the years, and I know that Dawn has seen this, too, is the number of females in our technology and engineering courses, too. So we're doing it through the courses we offer. We're doing it through word of mouth and establishing these clubs, and it's kind of growing and expanding so that, when I first got here, technology and engineering might have one, maybe two females. Now, it's almost fifty-fifty.
Wow.
It's great. And it has just raised the bar all across the board. And it's a great educational tool for our young men to see, I've got a strong, competent woman next to me who's incredibly intelligent, wants to go into this field, too. And that hopefully, from a global standpoint, we're going to see that happen. So, you know, nothing necessarily formal, Lynn, but just through their own participation and word of mouth and getting engaged in these clubs, which has been really cool to see the makeup of these clubs. The math team, for example, ten, fifteen years ago, may have had a handful of females. It's, there are more females on our math team than there are males, which is awesome.
That's amazing.
You know, I'd love it to be fifty-fifty, of course, but I think that that's a good thing, right? That's a, that's a good problem to have.
Right. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I interrupt with Dr. Tiano and the middle school update?
Thank you so much. The middle school slide dovetails with the high school slide in terms of highlighting the important relationship between schools and the parents. This relationship has always been important pre-pandemic, but even more so with our students as we transition back into our new normal. It's important for them to know that the adults in their lives are communicating and putting their arms around the kids and supporting them, not only throughout the school day, but at home as well. Last Wednesday, I had the opportunity of participating in our counseling team held a virtual sixth-grade guidance parent night, and that was well-attended. And for our parents who are coming into sixth grade, they may be new parents here at the middle school, or they may have had students move through the middle school. But as their, as their children are moving from the elementary to the middle school, it's important for them to be able to understand the resources that are available to them, but more importantly, make a connection with people behind the names and behind the emails and so forth. So it's about relationship building, letting our parents know, again, the roles of our adjustment counselors and our guidance counselors. And that was quite a successful night, thanks to our director of guidance, Ellen Jagan, for spearheading that. And that was a pleasure to participate in. The next is the reverse communication. We have some wonderful parent leaders in this community, as I'm finding out and continue to find out. Our Positive Group is sponsoring an evening with Dr. Lisa Demore, and that will be next Wednesday, the twentieth. And Dr. Demore is renowned author, speaker, psychologist. She's also the author of two books and a contributor to CBS News frequently on student issues, most importantly, female student issues. And greatly looking forward to her presentation and the back and forth as well. So not only are our parents supportive of what we're doing here in the school, but they're also very proactive in working with the parent community at large and just grateful to have them and work with them. The two pictures that you see there are something that I typically don't do. Those are pictures from inside a boys' room. And those are posters sponsored by a grant through Positive in terms of positive messages for our students. And we try to have those positive messages everywhere that our students are. But when they're, they're in the bathroom and they have the opportunity to, it's just a reaffirmation of who they are and a reaffirmation of the messages we're trying to send them, particularly as they are vulnerable, as they are in middle school, and they find themselves alone. And I've seen some research on this, really powerful. The message, the messages that are... The message, the messages that are sent to our students. We want them to be able to look wherever they are, they feel supported, warm, and the message is, is continuous. We will be having our parent-teacher conferences, and this will be a hybrid event. We had shared a survey with our parents back in September, I believe, September fourteenth. And our returns were about sixty percent of our parents wanted to have their parent conferences virtual. And so, as Mr. Smith was saying, our staff is working diligently to, still, as we work our way through this new hybrid environment, to meet our parents where they're at so that we can, again, make those relationships, make those connections. Everybody wants to hear how their child is doing in in those five-minute conferences, but it's, whether it's through the screen or in person, to make that eye-eye contact. And again, about reassurance and in making those connections. The conference signups should be going out this evening. And I'd like to give sincere thanks to Anna Hurley, our assistant principal, working with our team leaders in terms of just orchestrating that and ensuring our staff who are, will be in person and then virtual, that they have time slots so they can get back to their homes and so forth. It it's really been complicated work, but work that we feel is well worth it. And and the dividends are, we believe, will have more participation, even though it is a well-participated event typically, that folks who are working and so forth, childcare issues, will have access to their children's teachers. The last bullet that you have here is through conversations, you know, with our superintendents, as we talk about challenges that we face in the schools. And in one of the challenges here, it's not insurmountable and certainly not one that has not been addressed, because it has. It's around our our staff having to share their instructional spaces. Again, not insurmountable, not in the way of instruction. But surprisingly, that a hundred percent of our staff either share a space or they teach in different spaces throughout the day. Of the two hundred and forty blocks that we have in our schedule, two hundred and twenty are booked. So there's, there's a little flexibility there. And, you know, again, not a huge problem. But when you think about the preparation for our staff, you know, when I look at our, some staff members who are doing, having their prep period out in the hallway, they have their materials on the cart, that they're, they're moving themselves around. But also, too, we have teachers who are providing instruction in spaces that perhaps were not designed for their particular instruction. You can see French, you know, this is a beautiful learning space, but if the library is being occupied and classes are happening there, not optimal. As well as, for example, we have English, one section of English that's being taught in our tech engineering room. And again, a good teacher can teach anywhere, but not having access to her classroom library at that particular time and to have those, to have those resources available. I I could give you a few other examples there. I know last year that the district, they, in room one eighteen, had put in a wall in a double classroom to provide instructional space. As, as we were going forward, just in terms of planning period, planning for budget and so forth, space, if enrollment should move up, this was a conversation that we had, and superintendent suggested that I, I share this with you this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments?
You know, I like the fact that you're looking at enrollment going up, because my understanding is they are looking at developments in this town that are actually very large. So I was a little bit concerned about enrollment going up and how the schools would handle that. So it sounds like you're way ahead of the game already, which is great.
Trying to be in, in that necessity as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's concerning, we want our schools to stay with the best instruction we can and make the teachers comfortable, but with with what could be coming down the line, but there's going to be challenges and budget issues, I think, in the future. So thank you for looking into that.
You're welcome.
I'm curious, as we're thinking about long range, like I know we have the onsite insight report that looks at, you know, our long-range capital planning. Is there, are there, I'm assuming there are, but are there ways, as we're having these portrait of graduate conversations and talking about needing particular kinds of space for certain kinds of learning? And we're talking about our long-range, you know, capital planning. And like, that is like a pretty, like, high use. I mean, you come from other school districts, that's like a pretty high degree of use, and I think it's similar in the high school.
It is.
To be thinking about what that, like, at least figure out what that use is compared to other peer districts. You know, what kinds of spaces are our students learning in compared to the spaces in other places? So that we can look at some data, because if we're going to be looking at major changes at some point to the structures of these buildings, it would be helpful for me to look at what is available for kids in Westwood or what's available for kids in Wellesley, and how does that compare to what our kids have access to in terms of, and our teachers in terms of space? So that's just like a long, I mean, that's not an emergency, which is a long-range task.
Pre, pre-COVID, we, we had talked about doing, you have groups come in and do a space audit. That's what I'm thinking about. And, you know, we just haven't done that, but that's probably something to see if, like, this space, is this still the way that a school should use this, this much space? And so that's what some, something that we probably will look, look to do. I mean, this is, we did a short-term fix last year by putting a dividing wall into a, you know, a really large classroom and made two classrooms out of it. But the, there's a bigger picture of, of how we, how we're utilizing the space.
Right, I would agree, and I think that, like, in the decade or plus, since, it's been a while since this building was built, like, just what the kinds of spaces are that schools want to have? And to what extent is it possible to retrofit our space? Are there particular ki- you know, I just.
Well, think about it, because we don't really have computer labs in there.
Exactly.
So the room that we converted was like a little computer room, not just, that's why we have all these desks. It came from there.
And then, like, you know, there's more, you know, schools that get designed for middle schools or high schools, they have more like pod learning space and places to bring groups together, flexible space type of situations. So just long range, obviously, we've been busy with other. But I just think it's an important question, because it does, it does impact what we can do and how flexibly we can do it. Thank you.
I just had a little, just, I love reading through all of the different things going on in schools. Just partly anecdotally, because I have a middle schooler, but the H Black, having the music lab and the open studio, that's, I think that's great that you guys have worked that out because I know my son, at least, loves having those options and talks about going with trends. And, you know, it's just a nice end of the day, so.
Really has been a pleasure to see, you know, students with specific interests engaging with other students with the same interests. And then watching that unfold has been, it's been gratifying.
Any other thoughts or questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dawn.
Okay, perfect. So you have your monthly warrant report, and I think pre-meeting, we discussed that maybe Judy will be your designated signer. Remember, with the Modernization Municipal Act back in two thousand and seventeen, I believe, it went from having three signers for the school committee to be able to say they only wanted one signer, right? To sort of streamline the process. So Ann had done it for many years, and so we'll, we'll have Judy jump on and sign the warrant. So if you ever have any questions, we provide you just with the amount. There's, it's hard to decipher a whole lot of that, but any new members who want to just come in and see what a warrant looks like, understand a little bit about it, just let me know, and we can definitely arrange to do that. But in lieu of having the three signers, by having one signer, we just have to share the information with school committee on a monthly basis. So moving on to, you have your first financial, set of financial statements for fiscal year twenty-two. And I have to laugh because tomorrow we're opening the budget for fiscal year twenty-three. So I never know, I never get to live in the year that we're in. So luckily, I, you know, I think my report covers most of the details, but just a few highlights on the revenue. And luckily, chapter seventy came in where we anticipated. Where you see some red numbers for chapter seventy is because we had some unknown school choice and charter school activity. Obviously, we don't know that when they did the preliminary. They protect you for charter school a little bit by giving you charter school reimbursement. I'm going to dig into that a little bit more and understand how many students we have, but that's what we're seeing on our payments that are coming in. We're having a little bit larger deduction for both school choice and charter school than we had originally budgeted for. Chapter seventy-one, I think, is our cherry sheet amount is understated. So although you see a red number right now, when we get our first payment in January, I anticipate you're going to see that going the other way to the black based on how much I know that we filed in our end-of-the-year report. Remember, last year was our first year of the new contract, which had a twenty percent price increase? Plus, we basically went to school all year long. So our, our actual transportation costs are going to look significantly different than they did the previous year, which what your cherry sheet's based on. So don't want you to be surprised when we sort of see that swing the other way. Other than that, right now, we're anticipating all the other activities to come in at budget. You will see that we are collecting parking fees this year, much to the secret of students. And also, I just highlighted, reminded you that we did increase the high school activity fee last year during the budget cycle. So that's now reflected in the revenues that we're collecting for that. On the expenditure side, the salaries is the one number that sort of comes together. As of nine-thirty, we have majority of our employees fully encumbered. And so it gives us a snapshot of, of what transpired between where we built the budget in March and where our staff lay, you know, come to land in September. And so we unfortunately had only positive activity. We did have a couple of post-budget changes that actually covered the cost of our addition of the academic specialist at the middle school. I do still have a few more lane changes, I just reviewed payroll tonight. So we will see a little bit more of a shift when I get all those lane changes in. But at the end of the day, I think we look pretty much on budget. I did note to you that we have one open position in the business office and one or two opened in our custodial department. So I'm in dire need of applicants. I will have to tell you, we've had zero applicants. And I would think every school in the Commonwealth is looking for custodians, so if you know anyone.
School spring, is there something we could share online to, like, share on social media?
Yes, I can do that. So it's on, we're on School Spring, we're on Indeed, it goes to Glassdoor. Our subscription to School Spring also goes out to other, you know, employment postings. So I'm getting ready to send an email out to actually all of our, our staff list, just to see if they know of anyone for those positions.
Make it a shareable link, like, I'm happy to pass it on.
Thank you, we'll, we'll do that.
What, what position is open in your office?
Our accounts payable specialist. So I'm paying bills right now, so if you want, I'd be desperate to find somebody.
Move that, if you send that out.
Yeah, exactly. And I highlighted that we, we did end up hiring one additional educational assistant based on our student cohort needs. We have some funding opportunities, but for now, I'm just going to let it sit there until we see where we need to, to play around with the operating budget. Again, I highlight to you that our, our, our winter and spring coaches aren't encumbered yet. And then our substitutes and our custodial overtime happens as is incurred. So that's where you sort of see some of the larger numbers right now, and they'll sort of dwindle as we progress through the year. On the expenditure side, you know, it's still too early to say anything. By your next meeting, I will, I'm hoping to have encumbered healthcare to see where we land and also utilities. The rest of the operating budgets, we just, you know, we expend as they occur. So those numbers, again, will continuously reduce down. I will say I've seen more spending after last year, sort of a quieter year of spending. I do see the both schools ordering a lot more, which is great, we want that to happen. So I look at, we probably will never see a six-hundred-thousand-dollar turnback again. I'm just preparing that that's, we're pretty much looking like we'll probably operate on budget this year. As you also, for your special revenue and revolving funds, have your first quarter quarterly report for fiscal year twenty-two. Again, just shows you, it's not a whole lot of activity, because it was the summer months. But it just keeps you up to date on those funds that sit outside the general fund. And then we did apply, submit our budget for the S R three grants, and I sort of gave you a synopsis of the categories. We'll continuously review that and sort of stream, you know, better define and streamline where we need those funds. Keep in mind, as I told you, we have until September of two thousand and twenty-four. So there is no huge rush to run out and try to spend it all. We want to use the fall to get a better sense of what the students need, what the staff needs, so we're not rushing into it. We sort of put them in buckets of categories that we can refine as the year goes on. And then it's just fiscal year twenty-one wrap-up, this is where we're bridging the three years right here. We did file our end-of-the-year report by October first, reminding the committee that we do have a compliance audit that needs to be done by March thirty-first. Our auditors were out and completed their field work last week. It was, it was pretty seamless. And we are on track to present your audited financial statements to the committee in January. And again, I just reiterated that we have already submitted our E and D, but we know that takes. Last year, I think, was February before we got our final certification. So as soon as that information comes in, we will notify the committee. So that's it for the finance world.
Any questions for Dawn? Thank you, you always do such an amazing job of keeping us marching forward, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so that brings us to October enrollment.
So in your package, just preliminary, this is always a big number for our financial people who sit out in the audience, because October first data is what drives the assessments that we charge the two towns. So I did make sure Cheryl put preliminary, because as we all know, there's still a little bit of scrubbing that takes place in our database. So when we present better enrollment in November, you will have a better look into what the assessment percentage is going to be. So I, I always tell the finance committees to not, like, go write this in stone, but this gives them a little bit of an idea. And we'll have more information for you in November.
Questions on that? What, what is the trend of those numbers compared to last year?
To be honest, I don't, I haven't looked at it yet. I did a quick and dirty to see where the numbers were, I don't think, I think it's in the ballpark.
Okay. Great, thank you. This brings us to the consent agenda. And I was talking to Superintendent Smith. Is it possible to get an update on the middle school field trip but not have it in the consent agenda? And if we do that, do, do we have to vote to, to move that around? Did I understand that correctly?
Well, you know, so field trips present, you know, usually if you're consent agenda. We've got all the information for you, but we're in a very different time right now where one of the things you'll even see under your communications are a couple of field trips that you actually approved. When you approved, I believe, in February twenty-twenty for a trip to the Bahamas at the high school that was going to take place last year in February of twenty-twenty-one. That didn't happen, it's back on, fully approved for twenty-twenty-two. I felt very strongly, I've talked to both principals, that I do think we need to update everybody. I don't have a magic ball here, a crystal ball, to tell you what's going to happen in February or April or June. February is the trip to the Bahamas. April, I believe, is the trip out west for our high school students. And December is, excuse me, June is a trip to Washington, DC, which I'm told your eighth graders take, haven't taken, I believe, in the past couple of years, but take as a rite of passage. So I just think we need to have a conversation. There are some concerns. I think at first, when COVID hit a couple of years ago, was money concerns. People had put money down, how were they going to get money back, trips couldn't happen. People are back on board as far as sponsoring trips, but there are some logistics that I, I just think I want to make sure the school committee hears, and we make some decisions on that. So I've asked Frank to, to kind of update us on the Washington, DC trip. And then Principal Smith and I had an opportunity today to review the two trips again that have already been approved. But we might have some suggestions going forward.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. The Washington, DC trip for our eighth graders has been.
The Washington DC trip for our eighth graders has been in place for many years, is my understanding. And as two of our educators, John Betigan and Kathy Malloy, approached me this August and Mr. Kellum as well, I spoke with Superintendent Smith. And Superintendent asked us to put together information, possible questions, you know, and try to perceive every situation. Because if it's something that we could do, let's, let's not wait till the last minute. And in your packet, you do have information directly from the company called World Strides. And before we even approached putting this information together, our teachers surveyed our parents. And within your packet, 149 responses, 122 said yes, 24 said they weren't sure, and three said no. And obviously, you are putting a trip together on, on projection in terms of what COVID numbers look like, what does it look like in Washington DC at that time versus where we're at here. So there are a lot of factors there. You have the details of the trip essentially, which have not changed over the years, is my understanding. Specifically, in terms of student safety as it relates to COVID, two nurses typically fly down with the students. World Strides, and I've not seen this in my experience, they have doctors on call in Washington DC. And that means that travelers, our students have access to in hotel emergency medical care 24 hours a day. And these folks are affiliated with the George Washington University Department of Emergency Medicine. In terms of requirements for our students, if our students are vaccinated, they would need to get a PCR COVID test three to five days before departure. Our unvaccinated students and chaperones as well would need to, sorry, that was for our non-vaccinated folks, and for our vaccinated travelers to get a COVID test two days before departure. So the idea is that students, chaperones making the trip to Washington are negative. Currently, all of the sites that our tour would visit require masks. The requirements would be that students would be wearing masks indoors at all times. And obviously, if those mandates were lifted in Washington or here, you know, we would follow suit. The, in terms of, in terms of the question that Superintendent had pushed back on us on, if a child becomes COVID positive while on the trip. And having that discussion with Jill Fedor, and World Strides has put together some protocols that you can see here in terms of they would take the lead in coordinating with our tour group in terms of providing a space for that student to be quarantined or transportation to medical facility, would work with us in terms of the contact tracing and would coordinate not only testing, but also to travel arrangements for students and what that looks like. Through our conversations, if students were negative, chaperones negative before they go to Washington, if they contracted COVID there, that may not show until they come back. And that's the issue in terms of coming back to our school population. Within here, you have, you see that if families take out the insurance to be fully refunded, whether the trip was canceled by World Strides or is canceled by the administration, except for their $99 deposit. If families do not choose to have that insurance, then they run the risk somewhat to other cancellation policies. And so we've, we've asked our staff, they've been working with World Strides, as you see in here, since January '21 through last month, they've had 60,000 students and families and chaperones travel with 20 positive COVID cases. That's their information. I've validated that. So we share this information, you know, with our administration, and we share this with you folks.
Thank you. Any questions or thoughts on that?
Are we voting on this tonight then, or not tonight?
We're not going to, we don't vote on the field trip, do we?
You do, you have to approve an out-of-state field. I do want to share that, because you're also going to hear about two trips that you approved, one out of the country to the Bahamas and the other, you know, out west where they're traveling, I believe, between three states.
Three states out west, yes.
So I will tell you, in discussing with our advisory, our health and hygiene advisory, our nurse supervisor Jill Fedor was on the call. I've had conversations with, again, Kate McCarthy, working with that group, and certainly our principals. And I want to thank, again, our staff members who have, again, been supporting these trips for many years. So here is some of the recommendations. Number one, I think, again, we want our kids to have these experiences. And when you talk about the two high school trips, I believe the trip to the Bahamas is going to take place, it has 12 students that would be attending the trip in February. There are three chaperones that are going with this group, and they're in dorms. They're in dorms with, again, I can have Principal Smith share with you, but there is a rigorous testing program that our students would be able to take part in, not only with some of the things we would obviously mandate before they leave, but also, you know, while they're there. So the biggest question, and this is from the health and hygiene advisory, number one, they felt that all students should be vaccinated since none of these are trips that are a part of the regular curriculum or part of a course curriculum. It is considered extracurricular for them to go. So that was number one. Number two, there had to be real concern with sharing with parents what the expectations were. You know, there's such a small percentage chance of a student testing positive symptomatic while in, and I want you to picture this, you know, 150 students in Washington DC are eighth graders, you know, 12 students in the Bahamas, 22 students taking a trip to three different states in our national park. So if a student were to test positive, what would we do? You know, who would, how would they quarantine? Who would be responsible for staying with them? When we talk about getting them home, there's probably restrictions on air travel. So it wasn't that this was impossible to do. The recommendation was to make sure that we had those conversations with parents and they had a plan in place should that happen. And again, very low percentage that this would probably happen, you know, as Dr. Tiano just talked about, 60,000 students, you know, were able to take the trip to Washington DC. And what was it, 20 cases?
Right, that was World Strides in terms of their work with other districts across.
So the percentage is low, but I just want to make sure we approved these previously, where, you know, we're sharing this information with you. And again, I want to say as superintendent, because we started out by saying, we want experiences for our kids. A lot of planning has gone into these trips, but I just want us to have that conversation.
Spotify can also add, so the Island School, that trip, they are requiring everyone to be vaccinated. So that is not even in our control. So everyone there, because the Island School is an operating school. And so that's why it's a little bit different than the trip to the national parks. So they also are a testing site because they are a school and they do, in fact, mandate vaccines. The latest I have from Grand Classrooms is because the national parks have not designated that you must be vaccinated in order to enter national parks. They do have a COVID policy, but it doesn't talk about anything about mandates around vaccinations. The question and the concern that we have is information around, because there's protections, obviously privacy protections if a student is or is not vaccinated. But you, you do have an opportunity where you could have somebody vaccinated and a student not vaccinated rooming together. And so that was part of why, in talking to the health and hygiene and the boards of health, that they felt as though there should be an expectation of vaccinations.
And that could also be true on the DC trip, the roommate situation.
Sure.
You have four students rooming together on the DC trip.
Was there any kickback at all from the parents, just out of curiosity? Because I'm, like I said, I'm the one being contacted by the healthcare providers who have sick children. They're the ones I'm here to fight for, so because I know their children's conditions, they told me, and I'm very concerned for them. So I would hate to deny a child something. So was there anything at all that was a kickback from any parents to say, my child can't have this vaccine, I'm sorry?
We've not shared that with the parents. Again, with the parents, it's a preliminary stage. We didn't want to say that we're going forward. We were putting the information together. And even before our teachers did the legwork, they wanted to see who may even be interested. So should this be approved and this goes out? You know, given the conditions, it may, that number may not be that high, or it may be.
Right, right, exactly. So that's actually good then. So the parents know us straight up front, if you want to present this to your child as even an option.
Right.
You have to be vaccinated. And if they're not vaccinated because they have a heart condition or something like that, then the parent will probably make the choice not to offer it to the child, which is a little bit better, I think.
Well, it's not a condition as this is proposed here this evening, to have all children vaccinated. It's proposed, and this is through, you know, the company has been their practice.
Oh, of course, yeah.
That all students, he and chaperones, have proof of a negative test within X amount of days, depending on their vaccination status.
Okay. So is it, I'm sorry, is it the one company doing all three trips, or is it three?
Three totally separate.
Totally different. And all three companies have a vaccine requirement for the children?
No.
No.
That's what I thought, that's why I'm a little bit confused, yeah.
Just the one in the Bahamas.
Just the Lutheran, just the Island School has, has that requirement at this time.
It was a recommendation from the health and hygiene committee that, again, if we were going to have students, you know, sharing, you know, space rooms together, that was a concern. And number two, making sure that we had that dialogue with parents. So that if something happened, you know, we would have to make sure parents were aware that it was their responsibility to, you know, be with their children and quarantine with them, you know, whatever the requirements are before they can return home.
Okay. Have students, so Island School vaccinated, so that's all set, that's not a lost decision. Has the grand, have kids on the national parks trip already put down money that's not refundable?
No, not that's not refundable.
So, you know, just, if we're having a deliberation here, like, I am generally speaking in favor of for optional school trips where children are going to be rooming together with other children where they don't know and being exposed and unvacc, like, it could really blow up. I think back to our norovirus opportunity. So you didn't live here?
I've thought about it.
We have an extreme norovirus adventure with some trips to the, so, so much puking. But I'm so impressed that any teachers in this school district would like to take kids on field trips. Thank you, teachers, because that was a lot. I, I would support in the case because these are optional field trips, that an expectation would be to go on them, that you are vaccinated. I would also support Kathy's request, and I would want a very clearly articulated plan for if you choose for your child to go on this trip and they test positive for COVID while on this trip, this is what will happen so that everybody knows what they're getting into. And then lastly, I know that we've always historically, with regard to DC, where most of the children have gone, we've done a great job with the Boston opportunity or with other opportunities. And I would love to make sure that we do a very good, robust, thoughtful plan for kids whose families elect not to send them on an out-of-state trip while the other kids are in DC. Because I think that that's also been a really special opportunity for kids who stayed back, that they've reported to have really positive experiences in the more local field trips. But I just would want us to make sure we spent a lot of care to include so that nobody's, you know, there's just different experiences, not.
And that is part of the planning.
Yep. And I know they've always historically done that, so that would be my thought on this particular issue.
And you do have a number of districts that are saying absolutely no field trips anywhere. So that hasn't been the case here. You have two approved, which is why we're here to make sure. And you have one before you that, with the middle school, Washington trip.
Does it, and I'm just kind of, I'm not trying to make things difficult, but does it make any sense for there to be a parent meeting before we vote on this and get more feedback? Or am I just complicating the waters there?
It doesn't have to be a meeting, but maybe a survey would be interesting, like.
Well, there was a survey, and I will admit to being one of the 24 not sure. Full disclosure. My older two kids loved the trip, and like we've all said, I would love for it to be able to go. I do think we're still in a different time than when my older two kids went. So I guess if we approve it, I just, you know, just making really clear to parents, you know, the COVID issues. And also, I read this through carefully, the cancellation policy, because if I'm reading it correctly, you need to get the refund insurance, the trip insurance, to get anything back, even if the whole school decides not to go. So I think that needs to be really clear to folks before you potentially lose $1,000.
Can we mandate that people who go buy insurance? Or is that not, you can't really?
I bet you can't mandate it, but we can put it in bold.
Because if you went back to the last time, because there was a problem, I understand, getting the money back the last time it took, you know, because we've never had it before. So maybe, you know, we quantify and say, you know, we don't know what will happen. It would be probably in your best interest. I think about all the screens when you, when you, you know, decline the waiver on the rental card and have to continue to tell them that you really don't want the extra insurance.
But sometimes it pays off. And my kids did some of the trips, the extra trips with teachers, and some of the leaders actually make, sort of mandate, make you mandatory to pay the insurance because it takes the pressure off of them. We had the trip to Paris when the volcano was going off in Iceland and didn't get to happen. So you just don't know what's going to happen, so the insurance definitely covers you. Yeah, China.
All right, that was something.
I remember that.
Her suitcase was packed for months.
Yeah, it was.
This is probably a stupid question, but so Kathy, you said that there are other districts who haven't approved, say, just no field trip.
Correct.
So obviously, they don't want kids getting sick with COVID on the field trip, and then what do we do with this kid now? Are there any other reasons or any other, and again, you may not know, this may be pretty self-evident, but is there anything else that we're not thinking about in addition to the issue of COVID that should cause us to say, hmm, maybe this isn't such a good idea anymore that other districts have thought about? And if you don't know, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
I don't know. This is, again, one of those times that is very different. We must have spent quite a bit of time today, again, when you're talking about the health of our students. So we did spend time with the health and hygiene committee. Those were their recommendations, mandatory vaccination for the very reasons we talked about, kids sharing rooms, et cetera, and a very clear protocol that the parents are aware of, that the expectation is, you know, if in fact a child tests positive, has to quarantine, that you have to, you know, whatever your plan is, you know, and of course, we talked about families, you know, if it was a family where somebody was back here that tested positive, you know, you need to have some kind of a backup plan, you know, to get to your child. We just, I talked about additional chaperones, if that was a possibility, so that that chaperone would know that their role was to stay there until the parents were able to reach the student. So this is, this is all new, and we're kind of, I don't want to say making it up as we go along. We're sharing this with you that, you know, and again, everybody was looking to do everything we could so kids could have opportunities.
And what would that protocol be? I mean, I just drove back from DC last night, and it was torture. Is it that parents will have to go and pick their kids up in DC using a car?
I doubt they could take a plane. I don't think the plane. I doubt they could take a plane. I don't think the plane would allow.
And I assume that someone who figures these kinds of things out and knows all the ramifications will tell us what the correct protocol is.
Well, again, we would, we would put something together. And that's why we wanted to talk about it to you tonight to see where, and again, two you've approved. So we just, you know, need to be sure that everyone.
Those are much smaller scale trips though. Like I feel like the two we've approved are smaller scale. They happen during school vacations. Right? Am I correct?
They do, that's correct, yep.
In one case, they have to be vaccinated. In the other case, I don't, I feel like it's a very optional thing. Like if you want to go on the thing. And that's a very nice opportunity that kids have. It's different than most of the eighth grade goes to DC. It's just a different whole thing. It also happens during school days.
Right.
I think, you know. It feels like two very different situations to me.
Is the Boston option, is that, do the kids stay overnight?
I don't believe so.
It's on day trips.
I mean, maybe, yeah. Maybe more families might choose that option this year if that's what they're comfortable with. The only other thing I can think of is, and I'm sure that the people who run this program are thinking of this. But, you know, it's my understanding that not everything was open in DC yet. And so might change what they're visiting. And so that, you know, making sure it would be still worth the trip. Obviously, I would think the company is doing all that legwork. But I know at the back to school night, one of the AP gov teachers said they were considering not doing a trip. They usually do it to DC because not everything was open.
I believe there's, and I don't know which one. One site on the itinerary that currently is not open.
Is it possible for us to find out from World Strides? Like by next month, say, like to noodle on this for a while? And find out for those 20 kids who got COVID on this trip? What exactly happened? What did the World Strides do? What did the families have to do to rescue the children? Like what, how old were the children? Like kind of like, I know they can't give out personal, but like what? Okay, it was only 20, but for those 20 kids, to what extent was this a wildly dramatic and traumatic situation?
We could have a representative sitting right here or zoomed in, you know, which they have offered. And of those 60,000 students and chaperones that have taken trips, I don't believe they were all to DC. So, you know, each, we'd asked them for protocols. And you have the generalities here within their report, but it's not specific. And we would push them on that, obviously, because we would have to lay out for parents very specifically what's at stake here.
Right. That's a good idea, I think.
Would that give us enough, sorry, Tracy?
No, that's okay. No, I think, I think it's a good idea to have someone come in to those questions that were asked, just so we know the kids are safe.
If we moved the vote to October, does that give us enough time? Does that give the teachers enough time?
November.
Oh, my gosh. Yikes. Does that give folks enough time on the planning end if we don't potentially approve it for another month?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I would, I would venture a guess that the company would still like to do business with Dover Sherburne Public Schools and could work that out. But I would have to check with our teachers who are in communication, you know, with that company.
I would feel more comfortable putting it off a month gathering this information. I'm neutral in whether or not the salesperson from World Strides comes. Because, you know, as much as, and they're gonna, sure, that helps. But what I want to know is like specifically what happened to people who are on trips. Especially eighth grade people, because those are different people than high schoolers. Right? Like what, what we can do and to what extent they can do things independently.
More than us knowing, I feel like I want the health and hygiene committee to know so that they can factor into our protocols.
And I think that I'm also curious to hear from, you know, the meeting site. This is a public meeting, hopefully kind of word will get out. I am sure, I mean, obviously, people have emotional feelings on all sides. But I am curious to understand a little bit more about what people want. And what, you know, to what extent we can support all the things that people want.
Right. And I'd also, I also think that before we vote on this, it would be good to know what, what health and hygiene recommends specifically and exactly with regard to the, you know, the protocol if someone gets COVID.
I would also feel better if we were, if we had the opportunity to think about it for a month. And I wonder if maybe even Ms. Bedigan and or Ms. Malloy might, you know, they, having done this trip before, they might know, they might be helpful.
Yeah.
And sorry, Kate, you said there was a survey. What were the questions in the survey or just a general idea?
It was really short. I'm knowing interest. So wasn't it just kind of how comfortable do you feel?
Very short, yeah.
Yeah, yes, no, not sure.
Okay, okay, great.
Your child's name. If we are able to offer the spring trip to Washington DC, would your child participate? If you're not sure, when do you think you would be able to make a decision? And comments.
Okay. And how many families were we looking at were interested?
It was, what do they say?
It was in our. 149.
149 responses, 122 said yes.
That's great.
And again, what they were saying yes to was yes, they'd be willing to hear more about it.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Is there any possibility of renegotiating that cancellation policy as well? It seems really harsh, like I wonder.
Yeah, I agree, because, you know, you're asking folks to pay another $160 on top of the fee to get that. That crossed my mind, yeah.
That could ease.
Right. I'm wondering if there's any way that we could get World Strides to absorb some of the cost of the full refund program. I don't know.
So am I hearing that people would like to put this on the agenda for voting in November?
And I'd like to know too, to make sure that things are open, like, you know, if in a month or things have changed. Like one way or the other. Is it going to be worth, you know, going if there's not a lot of?
Well, a lot can happen. I mean, this trip is in June.
Well, exactly, yeah, exactly. Okay.
The State Museum is open. I was just there.
Okay, that's right.
Any other questions on the high school trips? The two trips?
Do we have to take any action if you would like to, say, to suggest that vaccinations be mandatory?
I would, I would think so.
I would like to move that for the trip to the Grand Canyon, participants must be vaccinated, fully vaccinated.
And not DC.
I want to hold on all the DC stuff for now.
Okay, motion by Maggie. Second. Judy, any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
And we'll put together protocols for expectations with parents.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so that brings us just to the consent agenda, which is of just approving the minutes from September 14. Does anyone have any thoughts or corrections on that? Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from September 14, 2021.
Some more?
Second?
One second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
I forgot how to do it in person.
I know, I know. All right, thank you. And then the rest of our communications is just for our information. Thank you both very much for the updates on the field trip. It's very helpful. And items for November 9th, well, now we have the DC trip. Anything else that anyone thinks so, please let me know.
Now, will we be getting update on the superintendent's search at the joint meeting this week?
Yes, that's on the agenda, right?
I think it is.
Yes, okay, thank you.
On November, you will, if you want to put your thinking caps on, budget guidance. So anything that you want us to consider, because in December is your first version, the budget. So that'll be a line item that's.
Great.
Different, yes.
Thank you. Okay, wonderful. And do we need to poll to adjourn? I know I'm mixing up with the.
No, just motion to adjourn.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Wonderful. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.